It is now six o'clock and we will call the Berkeley County Planning Commission meeting for August the 2nd in order. Do we have roll call, please?
Teddy Gothenhour.
Here.
Linda Barnhart.
Eric Al.
Here.
McKenna Norton.
Present.
Tim Lewis.
Present.
Daniel Gant. Nick Deal. Nick Deal?
Yeah, Nick?
Yes, this is Nick Deal. Did you call my name?
Yes.
Okay, I didn't hear you.
Alright.
I'm here.
Derrick Smith.
Present.
Thank you. And the next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Have a motion by Mr. Goff and a second by Mr. Gothenhour to approve the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those in defense say... Sunshine Law Speakers, number four on the agenda, you're here to talk about one of the public hearings. We ask that you hold your comments until we get to that public hearing. But this is an opportunity, if you have something from the public that you'd like to bring before the commission, that you can come up and share your thoughts with us. No one signed in. Alright. The next is approval of the minutes. Okay, we have first by Mr. Goff and a second by Mr. Smith for approval of the minutes from July 19th, 2021. All those in favor?
Aye.
President abstain for absence.
We have one abstain for absence, Mr. Gothenhour. Okay, we have nine public hearings to see. And in consideration of everyone's time, we ask that you keep your comments to a minimum. If you're here as a larger group, we ask that you have one or two spokespeople come up and speak about your issues with the project. We'll try to make it through all of these to see, so we just ask that you give a little consideration to the commission and to the other speakers in the attendance tonight. The first public hearing is Amberfield.
Yes, so the... It's sounding wrong. Sorry. I'm loud, whatever. Okay, so the first public hearing tonight is a final plat approval for Amberfield, Section 7, lots 127 through 130 and 144 through 170, filed 2105-192. The developer is Highlands Out of Potomac and the engineer is Foxon Associates. It's located in the Falling Waters District, map 6, parcel 2. It's located on the west side of Kitchens Orchard Road, approximately 0.5 miles from the intersection of Grade Road. This project proposes 31 single-family residential lots on approximately 35 acres to be served by private, septic, and public water. The final plat meets the requirements of the subdivision ordinance. Therefore, staff recommends final plat approval contingent upon receipt of a surety in the amount of $476,100 even, and plat to be released upon receipt of that surety.
You have anyone to represent the project?
Good evening. Steve Cianovich with Foxon Associates representing the applicant.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. It's your opportunity to step forward and release your thoughts about this project. We do ask you to keep it to a minimum. Do we have anyone here to speak on Amberfield?
Stephen, I'm sorry to make a motion here, but I want a public hearing to close.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Gothenhour and a second by Mr. Goff to close the public hearing. Planning Commission members, do you have any questions for Steve or Foxon Associates on this project? Oh, excuse me. So, let's take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Alright, planning commission members, anyone have any questions? First, you go on this project.
Any new projects or recommendations? Sure, I make a motion that we accept staff recommendation and move it to final plat approval contingent upon surety of receipt of surety of the amount of $476,100. Plat is to be released upon receipt of surety.
Second.
You have a motion by Mr. Gothenhour and a second by Mr. Goff to accept staff recommendations for final plat approval contingent upon receipt of the surety in the amount of $476,100 and plat to be released upon receipt of surety. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next public hearing is Whispering Pines Townhomes.
This public hearing is also a request for final plat approval. The project is Whispering Pines Townhomes, Phase 2, lots 94 through 134, filed 2104-155. The developers, D.R. Acquisitions LLC and the engineers, Foxon Associates. It's located in the Milk Creek District, map 10, parcel 50, and is located on the south side of Middleway Pike, approximately 3,000 feet west of its intersection of Middleway Pike and Three Run Road. This project proposes 41 townhome lots on 4.5 acres to be served by public water and sewer. The final plat meets the requirements of the subdivision ordinance. Therefore, staff recommends final plat approval contingent upon receipt of surety in the amount of $463,887 even. Plat to be released upon receipt of that surety.
You have anyone to represent the project?
Steve Cianovich with Foxon Associates representing the applicant.
Again, this is a public hearing. We invite you to step forward if you have comments about this Whispering Pines Townhomes.
No public hearing to close. Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Goff and a second by Mr. Gothenhour to close the public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Planning Commission members, do you have any questions for Steve on this project?
Have a recommendation. I'll make a motion. We accept staff recommendation. Move the project to final plat approval contingent upon receipt of surety in the amount of $463,887. Plat to be released upon receipt of surety.
Second.
Okay. First, we have a motion by Mr. Gothenhour and a second by Mr. Smith to accept staff recommendations for final plat approval contingent upon surety in the amount of $463,887 and plat to be released upon receipt of surety. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next public hearing is Ridge Crest, Phase 3.
This is a public hearing for a request for final plat approval. The project is Ridge Crest, Phase 3, lots 8 through 18. The file is 2012-054. The developers, J.H. Real Estate LLC, and the surveyor is Roberts Land Surveying. It's located in the Arden District, tax map 16, parcel 6, and is located off of Haynes Ford Road, approximately two miles east of its intersection with Route 19 over 1. This phase proposes 11 single-family lots on approximately 19.9 acres to be served by private, well, and septic. The final plat meets the requirements of the subdivision ordinance. Therefore, staff recommends final plat approval contingent upon receipt of a surety in the amount of $182,875.20. Plat to be released upon receipt of that surety.
You have anyone to represent the project?
Good evening. Mike Roberts, representing the project.
Good evening, Mike. This is a public hearing on Ridge Crest, Phase 3. If you have comments, we invite you to step forward. State your name. Please sign in. State your name loudly so everyone can hear you.
My name is John Reynolds. I bought a house in the Phase 2. It was just recently finished, about less than two months ago. My house was built on my neighbor's property. I have complete total loss except for the land, and I'm still waiting for an appraiser to go through. That even the 70,000 that the appraiser started with on my land will be even less because I have a third of the house on me. I have the plans that I got from you that got me showing where you gave permission for them to do the septic, where they were supposed to go, how much vegetation was taken. My neighbor, who I'm on his property, we have two septic systems on just his property alone where they took out more vegetation as supposed to be. The WBB and WBC that's on this plan is talking about erosion, a lot of erosion, and it was severe. On there, they took more than what they should have in vegetation, which is going to make the erosion even more. Also, on this plan, it talks about the HOA being responsible for that. So, if they have to go back and fix things, they can raise our HOAs and we pay them to fix this, or when he's done with Phase 3, we're going to be stuck with our own HOA and we're going to have to cut out higher HOAs to fix all the erosion. I called the DEP. They came out, six violations. They were taking wood and taking it from one property and putting it on another. That's a violation. Not only did they come out, Berkeley County Public Service, Stormwater District came out, and they said that it was so bad that they think it should be a complete site shutdown, and they were going to discuss it. The DEP said the same thing when they called me back. I'm not the only one with a problem. I've got other neighbors whose properties are built on the line, are over the property lines, and they're all messed up. Their thing to fix it is to try to sweep it under the rug with little changes. But when you go into the easements on the plans that were approved by the county, they can't do that because I can't build a deck off the back of my house if they change it because I view within a 10-foot easement. The other neighbor on the other side, neither driveway, coasts to my property. I was told that this was the line, and this was the line, and this was the line, and it wasn't. And what's sad to me is that nobody went to look to see where the house was built, if it was built in the right spot. Now, I did talk to Heather about this, and she says that usually builders can usually put the spot, the house on the right property line. Obviously, in this, they can. I don't think that their bond should be reduced, and I don't think they should get to be able to even be approved for the next plot until they fix the problems that we're having now. Our road is sinking. Nugget Way is sinking. They puddle up water. There's mud all over the road from the erosion that's happening in all the yards. Somebody's got to do something here. And this is why I came here tonight, because the county, we're taxpayers, we pay. You guys are here to look in the best interest of the citizens of the county, and that's why we're here. And I could go further, but I won't leave time for my other neighbors. Thank you.
I thank you, John.
Excuse me, before you... Was there ever, when you got your loan for your home, assuming you got a loan for your home, like most of the rest of them, you always had, did you lend them require a locational survey to be done on your property?
No, they went off the survey. That was done by Robert Surveying. And then the appraiser, not knowing, because they're going off of what the builder said was our line, they said that was our line. I and my neighbor walked the line 410 feet back of his property, and that's how we knew there was a problem, that we did a direct from one coast to the other. We had them come out and do a survey, which I had to fight them to get the survey done. First thing, we're not going to trust a bunch of idiots with a tape measure. Well, I'm in the construction business. I've been in it for over 25 years. I've been doing it since I was 13 years old, doing HBAC work. I've been on every site there is to be on, commercial or residential. I've never seen a mess up this bad. And then when we finally got them, after two times, they get the surveyors out, they pulled the surveyors off the job because they knew it was wrong. They came out the next day with what they said was a resolution, which wasn't. Then when they surveyed the rest of the property, another neighbor's house, corner of his house is on somebody else's property, the one house in the back on Lot 27 can't even be appraised because the line's so close to his house. I just want to know who messed up so bad that everybody here in our neighborhood that's here tonight, there's a lot of them. I see all my neighbors here, all of them. And where we're going to suffer for this, and where they can walk away eventually, then we get stuck with the bill. That's why I'm asking the county council not to let them approve anything until they fix what they messed up on all these other property lines and houses. You know, hold them responsible. Thank you.
So, my name is Christina Collins. I bought a house last July, so I'm in the process of my one-year review. My property lines are messed up. When we moved in, you were told one thing. There was a couple arguments, so I brought Roberts out to come survey. Property lines completely changed, do not line up with any of the county drawings. As far as them fixing stuff during the one year, I sent them some pictures of some major deficiencies in my basement with the concrete and with the actual supporting beams that are holding my house. They wanted to do a quick fix. I questioned it. They ignored me. They will not call me back. They will not email me back, nothing. During month number four, come to realize they buried my sump pump two feet underground, so we created like a geyser, shooting water everywhere. I called them. They fixed to that. They said that they would call me and schedule a time for them to come out. They did not. They showed up to my house randomly by themselves. I came home to my yard completely torn up, a piece of 15, 20-foot PVC that was not leveled out, sticking out of my yard, not daylighted, not nothing, didn't even cover it up, just laying there, and they said that was their fix. Cody and I have emails back and forth, and I have emails saved where Cody has been extremely rude and just not caring. He will not fix the things he said he fixed. He will not fix the things that are in our contract, and he won't even get back to us. So, I do not believe anything should happen. So, he fixes what is wrong with our houses. The emails, he, Laitman, told me that there is nothing that he could do because he would never please us. So, that is a problem being an owner of a company.
Thank you.
That's Phase 1, that house.
Oh, yeah, that's Phase 2.
Phase, Phase 1.
Phase 1, Lot 3.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Ken Allenzworth. My wife is Susan, and I reside at 25 minute away in Ridge Crest Development. I don't know if you have noticed, but if you look at their business page on Google, it says permanent exclusive status of this activity. We have, I, let me preface what I'm about to say, but I admittedly and apologetically have not attended a county commission meeting before, so I do not have a frame of reference about the number of attendees and the amount of interest in this particular project. The fact that most of our neighborhood is here should speak volumes to us, and it should ask us to look deeper into the core issues with the builder, the contractor, perhaps with the county and the code enforcement. And my simple ask is that you consider all of the information that should be considered with the affected residents and new homeowners, and that we continue to preserve the public trust by protecting any future homeowners from what we're experiencing to date. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Cynthia Dominguez. I live in Part 1. I am the second person to move into the subdivision. Just went through my year of trying to find things they said they would come back and fix. Basically, it was still tough luck. On my paperwork, it says we have 1.38 acres. The county says we have 1.41 acres. My well certificate that I asked about when I saw it, because it had an address in Inwood, another property owned by Jay Hess, but it had the address of the house there, and then parentheses down at the bottom, it said Ridge Crest Estates. So, I have no idea if my well was even checked, anything. I know the county came out, the county charges us, I think $50 twice a year to come out and check our well. They came out and checked it, but on my list of things to be repaired, not a single thing. And then when you hear, and I'm blessed because my house is in much better shape than people down the road. Section 2 is a total disaster. Section 1 is bad, but Section 2 is scary. I worry about the people that live at it. One day, somebody's going to go across that road and it's going to fall in on them. It's not fair that Jay Hess get away with this, or any of the people who work for him. We work hard for our money. We work hard for our homes. It's not fair for us to have to deal. And I worry about my neighbors because we're a bunch of good people. We are really straight-up, working hard, love our county, love our state. But I can't fathom in my head how it got so far that inspectors come out and check, they don't check that the houses are in the right places? I've never heard anything like that. I have people who are like, oh, well, I live in my neighbor's yard because that's where my house is. It's not right. Something has to be done to correct problems. Now, I moved in a year ago, July 10th. My paperwork on my well was July 2nd. So, it's been over a year, and I've been trying to get answers to that, and I was just told basically, oh, it's okay. It happens all the time. Is that how this county wants to be known, that you're running like this? I mean, it really gives Berkeley County a bad reputation. And you've got a lot of people here asking you for help, and that's all I have.
My name is Cynthia Cox. I live on Lot 20, which is in Phase 1. I received the occupancy permit for my house three hours prior to closing. How it got approved, I have no idea. I have no gutter system on the back of my porch. I contacted the county before we went to closing, and they said that they would not give an occupancy permit to my house until the gutter system was put on. The day of closing, at the table, they said that they would put a gutter system on just because I built a structure to the roof. My backyard has a very large slant. I have apparently two acres, but now I'm questioning if that's how much I have or not. And my neighbor, so all the rainfall falls from my property and has gone down to Lot 21, which is right next to me on the left. He now has a pond in his backyard from all my runoff because there's no drain system. And then that pond is going down to Nugget Way, which is what they are saying is sinking. The other thing that was questioned prior to going and closing on my house was whether or not there was a drain system on the left side of the development itself. And the answer was there is not, but they were going to allow everything from the left side of the property to run off and to go onto the right side of the houses, which is, Miss Cindy is my neighbor. She's across the street, so all of my rainfall floods her property, floods all the way down. And I'm not sure if the guy that lives in the first house floods it. You have all the rocks, so they can... Okay, yes. And so, yeah, it's, and I guess the idea is for all this water, there's no drain system is what it is. And that's my concern, is I don't want the builder leaving this development until a drain system is put in, so the water properly flows to where it needs to go and does not flood the neighbors. Again, I'm blessed as well. I'm at the top of the hill there, and I don't get the rainfall. My neighbor got the pond, so I'm glad it didn't cook the property next to me. But it was between the two properties that I picked, and I picked the other one luckily, but, you know, I talked to him, and, you know, they just, I, we need to fix something about this. I don't think the builder has the right to move forward until he fixes not only Phase 2, but Phase 1. I mean, there needs to be a drain system put into it. And then, who knows about the easement that's next to the house next to mine? Who knew that? There's not supposed to be a house. Yeah, so I just found out that there's not supposed to be a house behind me, and it's in the easement. And I asked, I'm, they, that's Tiffany James. She lives up there behind me. And I said, oh, well, you know, your house is great and all. I just hope they paid that road. And she said, no, that road's never going to get paid, and that's because it's easement. So, there's a lot of concerns. You know, luckily, I don't have as many as some of my neighbors here. But just so the county can see, if you live in Ridge Crest, maybe the appraiser can...
...and all your plans, all the original plans that were approved by the county. There's an actual spot for a normal plant where it's not allowed to build here, and there's a house back there that they built. So, they're not listening to anything that you were giving them approval for.
You guys gave them the permit for me to go to closing, and it should never like that. And I have emails from the county about the gutter system and videos and pictures that you guys received and physically told me that it would not go through. I went to closing because I had nowhere else to live. So, I had already sold my house before.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My name is James Brown. I'm also part of Part 1. One of the last houses built in there. But I'm going to be honest with you, I shouldn't back down to closing on my house from all the problems from just the agreed contract on what was supposed to go in the house, if what it wasn't. The unfortunate thing is that as a new homeowner, recently retiring after 27 years in the United States, coming to a deciding to reside out of my home record into a state that I thought was going to be a nice place to live, with kids, being able to retire, and being able to find a home of our dreams that I can retire from and be able to be happy. But it's actually been a nightmare. I'm not even going to speak about the unprofessionalism of these builders. They don't care about the residents that live there. And the reason I say that is they will park all over your property, drive in your driveways, and cuss your wife out because she asked me to move here so she can go to work and have no cares. That just shows you the type of building they're dealing with. That's not part of what Berkeley County should have to come from outside of the state into the state of West Virginia and treat our residents then. This isn't what West Virginia is known for. It's blowing up here, but I know we got a lot of other builders from the state that can do a much better job. We don't need to deal with this. They tore up property and refused to fix it. We've had contracts. They told us, deal with it, we're not going to put it into the job. Who doesn't? That's not professional, and that's not who we want in the state. We have too many people here that have a lot of issues from here. This isn't the first development that they've done this with. They've got lawsuits, people suing them for the same crap we're dealing. And if you want to continue to have more problems and congest your courts and eat up your time, keep approving this because it's only going to get worse. It's not getting any better. Got a lot of issues. This builder doesn't deserve it.
Any other comments from the public?
I just got here. I don't know what happened.
Pardon?
I'm sorry. I just got here. I don't know what kind of, what comments we want to talk about.
We're talking about the Ridge Crest, Phase 3 public hearing.
Good evening, council. My name is Jeremy Kenny. I closed on my house on 1 July this year. I am here tonight as a private citizen. Please forgive my uniform. I'm just keeping a look. I'm not going to really recap. I believe you've got a good picture now of what is actually going on in Ridge Crest Estates, Phase 1 and Phase 2. I was part of Phase 2. Everything that has been mentioned here tonight is true. There is no exaggeration. And I was brought up to trust and verify. I'm just asking you, as the county, to go back out, look at this one in Phase 2 of what we spoke about tonight, and verify what they've been doing. I will assist that. they've been doing in the state.
Just for my seat, I think anyone who lives here will tell you, come look at our house, come look at our yard, come look at our thing. We'd be happy to show you what we're upset about.
Yeah. Good evening. My name's Ed Crozny. I'm on Lot 23, Phase 1. And when I moved in, when they had graded the property, the pipe going out to my septic tank was pushed down three inches just by a little bobcat grading the lot and caused a big queue of blood in the basement. They came out and fixed it, but the pipe going to my septic tank was never elevated back up. It was just the elbow that cracked was fixed. And then I've got like an inch crack going through the whole foundation of my unfinished basement. So my concern is, and everybody hears, how much more is it gonna settle and cause further damage down the road? Hopefully, this was a retirement home for me and everybody in here. Something needs to be done, and the lady that said, I mean, it's like anytime we have a huge storm, I mean, it's like a river going down. And their solution was to come in and put, all you gotta do is drive into the subdivision and on Lot 1, when you drive in, there is like five big huge piles of rock to slow the water down. That tells me they didn't calculate for the runoff on all those houses.
Good evening. My name's David Stuckey. I just wanted to bring some more of their negligence, I feel, to attention, to aid in with whatever you must say. During the building process, I went in and requested all like an option and everything. They built with long tile, they moved rooms and designs, and their excuse to me was, if you don't like it, we can resell it the next time. Tomorrow, fifty thousand dollars worth, what you're paying. On top of that, somehow, I passed final inspection, and in my basement, I have two light fixtures that do not turn on. They, there's no switch, there's no, there's wire, they're permanently on to the bottom of the house. That was in the closing. I walked there, talking about it. There's like fixtures in the basement that have raw wires still in the ceiling with a hub or light bulb. No end caps, no nothing, just straight to that. They left my septic caps, no screws or nothing. My dog, I have a Great Dane, and they stepped on it and always fell in because the lid was bald when they stepped on it. So they left that. They also left it not filled and from the drainage. I'm on Lot 24, the gentleman who's just here is beside me. All here, the water comes down and it washed out my septic, around my septic, applied out a foot and a half, two feet, twice. I have told them about it, and they have never come back to fill it. I personally had to move my own dirt to fill around my septic because my dogs had fallen into it and it creates a huge sinkhole, and there was just foot and a half of water that resides in there until it just evaporates. So it just sits in my septic, around my septic, just sitting there all day. And, let's see, also, payment, I don't feel it's like they sealed either, because I'm having issues with that. It is starting to fall apart. And just the quality of the building is just not there, and the lack of consideration for people's well-being, especially with the lights never staying on, any gas supply or hazard. I have a like, a friend who's a certified electrician, and he has confirmed that that should have never passed inspection. So that's why I say anything. Thank you.
Thank you.
What's ironic, too, is they have truckloads and truckloads and truckloads of great topsoil out, but every single one of us have nothing but shale in our yard art. I spent six grand and nothing but dirt so my dogs would not cut their paws. And when I brought it up to their attention, they said that's all there was, but literally, two days standing outside, five truckloads of dirt, of dirt, great topsoil went out.
Anyone else have any comments?
Real question, sir. Now, how do they keep getting the letter when we have people signing off on permits? Like it's gonna be intact, so I should have never passed here. But I've got all the permits that were pulled on my house, but I'm sorry, a third of my house that I actually did own. And I just can't see why somebody isn't checking this so thoroughly, and we have people that we pay with our tax money to go out, pull permits, the permits that they pay to buy, and I know permits, 'cause I have to pull them myself. These inspectors who are up, are they even looking at what they're supposed to be looking at? And I think that's what we're all worried about, because when you get right down to it, you are our last line of defense on any build, that our house won't burn down, or won't flood, or won't fall apart, or won't slide down a hill from erosion, or nobody's on a road that falls apart when our loved ones come and help me in work. And we're gonna get stuck with the building end of this. Yeah.
And they're real quick to knock on your door and say something to you and will be very rude about it versus when you ask them to do something, it's like, they're not even there.
Yeah, I was wiping my driveway and trying to face the erosion, and they tried to put the stopper.
Okay. Can we just kinda like keep the comments out there? We're gonna do it upfront. You know, this is, gotta keep this moving along, got six more of these to go through. You know, so if you have anything else that you'd like to add, we invite you up, but if you're coming up to speak the same thing, we understand your concerns and we'll take those into consideration.
Commissioner, this is Ken Altucher. Yeah, I think it's important for us to understand that as a neighborhood, nobody wants this to be kind of an adversarial or malicious event. When that happens, we all know what happens to our neighborhood, to the reputation, to our, the value of the homes down the road. I do think that we have a shared ownership and responsibility, being the county and the homeowners, to bring this builder to account and have him resolve the issues that you're hearing tonight before we allow him to proceed. It would be a lot easier for me as a homeowner to have him simply come in and resolve these issues than it would be for us to take him and go to the next step. I understand we're fully prepared to do that, but none of us want that. As a side note, I've spent years in project management. I know full well that the triangle of scope, time, and quality are what make a project. With COVID, we understand that their time was truncated and the quality suffered as a result. Loss didn't change, so the quality is where they made up the project. And it's important for us to understand that. And I would implore upon you, with whatever authority you have as a county commission, to bring this builder to bear, bring code enforcement out, and let's write what's going on before we can consider proceeding and allowing them to continue to build in this
Any other comments? Take a motion to close the public hearing.
So move. Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Gopinath, second by Mr. Smith to close the public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passed. Mike, you wanna step up, try to address any of these concerns?
Sure. Regarding any issues with construction, I cannot speak to the relationships between the builder and the home buyers and homeowners. I do not have any credence for any, cannot address those concerns. I hear there's concerns, I've written several things down, and I will express that to the builder tomorrow morning. With regards to the issues in Phase 2, I was made aware that, first part of last week, we got a survey crew out and did in fact, locations on several homes to determine their exact location on the ground. And I have prepared a, a dusting class to show you some alternatives to mitigate the profits that were created by these constructions. Not knowledge, nothing has transpired to that. But there are literally two homes that are false property owners, which very still remind recollections of its own town. The blocks were marked about a year or so ago. There are long lot lines that go down through a, I guess it's like a smaller knee. I'm not sure what caused the builders to build what they did. It's a pole sack with lives apart and at varying angles, but there are errors there that need to be addressed. With regards to all the issues with current construction, with inspections, with house plans changing and so forth, I cannot really address that. But I do understand and hear the concerns with the residents out there.
All right. Thank you, Nick. While the commission member, if you have any comments or questions?
Yeah, this is Nick Deal. It's, I'm not sure, well, I don't know that we have the authority to address any of these things right now, but like there's some pretty significant issues and some concerns with this entire development, but do we have the ability to address any of those as a planning commission or not?
Nick, I was giving Tim a copy of a document while you were talking. I had received a notice of violation from the Stormwater District. This was issued on July 13th. And while a notice of violation doesn't typically stop something here at the Planning Commission, the next step is a stop work order if they don't complete all the items on that. Part of the notice of violation includes a follow-up evaluation on July 23rd, and I have not received the document from that follow-up inspection yet. So my recommendation, if it's possible, and then Jeff can elaborate, my recommendation would be to table your decision until the next meeting to give the Stormwater District the opportunity to provide us with their follow-up evaluation for the stormwater violations, and then give county engineering an opportunity to evaluate the permits that were brought up this evening and the different issues with the permits, and to evaluate nugget weigh. So the shorter version of that recommendation is to table till the next meeting until we have feedback from county engineering and county stormwater.
I have a question. The site developer is also the builder? Is that, am I understanding that?
That's correct.
That correct, okay. So we don't have different builders in there?
No.
Okay.
Not knowledge of that.
Is that, is that correct? Is the...
There's one.
One builder? Okay. I just... Okay. I just wanted to make sure that we didn't have multiple builders. We have one builder in there, and the builder is the site developer, J. H. Real Estate?
I believe you'll find that the development is J. H. Real Estate, the builder is J. Hess Group. It's the same.
Okay.
It's the same.
Same people, different things.
Same people, different organizations.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying.
Good evening. I'm Jeff Mozy, one of the attorneys for the county. I just wanted to kinda clarify some things in terms of what Mr. Deal asked and what Heather said. The code, West Virginia code, does provide that an application can be held for up to 45 days if further information is required. There do seem to be multiple additional pieces of information that would be nice for the planning commission to have ahead of time before making a decision. I also, just to not be misleading to the folks who showed up here, wanna make sure that, I just try to explain a little bit that this isn't the county commission, which we have a county council in Berkeley County. This is the county planning commission, which has a much more limited and upfront range of responsibilities. And in terms of all the approvals or whatever permits might have been granted, I don't know enough about this at this point to speak about them. I'll try to find out about them. But with previous projects or previous phases, generally, one of the avenues, and I do want you to realize that I think you have multiple possible remedies, but they're not, a lot of them aren't in the county's hands. But one thing that, if there is a previous bond in place for improvements, those improvements generally include things like stormwater management, sewer or septic roads. And if they, the project isn't complete dissatisfaction, and our county engineer would make a recommendation to the county council not to release funds, or if it was done properly and as it normally, more normally is, they would recommend the council release X amount of funds every, periodically, when they've done so much for the work. But I just, I, I understand people's frustration. Personally, I'm actually in a very similar situation. It's a different developer, different builder, similar problems and similar neighborhood feelings. But I just don't want everybody to think that it's necessarily something that this body can fix entirely, because this body is voting on, ultimately has to vote up or down on a plan for their third phase to go forward or not based on the requirements in the West Virginia code and the subdivision. If anybody wants to speak to me after, I'll try to hang around a little bit with the board. I'll try to look into the follow-up situation. Thank you. Does anybody, any of the planning commission members have any questions?
All right. Thank you.
This is just, this is just a land subdivision, correct? There's no construction being proposed to, so...
I believe...
It's fine.
Yeah, I believe there's a lot of... It's requiring a bond for the...
Okay.
If it was approved.
I see. Okay. That was a subdivision, or a, just a sub- dividing the lot out.
I think it had already been, this, the whole project, I mean, in the grand vision, had already been...
Gotcha.
Done, but then this is the beginning of the basis of the final class.
Gotcha. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion, this project be tabled until the next scheduled meeting. In the interim period, I would like to see Jeff, Heather, Brian, the gentleman from the mess floor, Mr. Walburn, Fred. Thank you. Get with J. Hess Group, and just try to get some of these problems settled.
Public hearing is already closed, so we won't take any more comments. Sorry about that.
No questions.
Thank you.
When's the next meeting?
Well, I don't know when this will go on, but you'll get a dance notice. It'll be open for public hearing again because it's coming back.
Will we close the public hearing?
It will have to reopen.
The decision for hearing final plan, we'll put it back on the August 15th.
August 15th.
Sixteenth. 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 Thank you.
Do you hear that, August? It'll be on the county's website as well, chief. We have a motion by Mr. Gopinath, or second by Mr. Goff, to table this project until August 15th, 16th?
Sixteenth.
Or until we get some additional information from other things. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all for your comments. Thank you, Mike.
I'm gonna have to introduce myself to inspect the project, the company.
All right. The next public hearing is on Archer's Rock, Phase 3A.
So this is a request for major plans change approval. Project is Archer's Rock, Phase 3A, Lot 2101-18. The developer is D.R. Acquisitions LLC. The engineer is Gordon, located in Falling Waters District, map 16A, parcel 49. and is located approximately 700 feet east of Harlem Springs Road, on Knocking Point Boulevard. This plan change proposes continuing Knocking Point Boulevard to be a cul-de-sac and adding 36 townhomes to supporting infrastructure per the development completion agreement made on March 2nd, 2020 with DR Acquisitions LLC and Berkeley County Planning Commission. No waivers or exceptions have been requested. County engineer Doug Smith issued a letter of completion on June 22nd, 2021, and stated that the major plan change meets the requirements for approval. The major plan change meets the requirements of the subdivision ordinance. Therefore, staff recommends approval of the major plan change.
Do we have anyone to represent the project?
Matt Powell, Representative, DR Acquisition.
All right, thank you, Matt. This is the public hearing for Archer's Rock, Phase 3A. If you have any comments, you please step forward, state your name.
Hello, my name is Eric Data. I live at Lot 61 in Archer's Rock. Been there for a little over a year. I, unfortunately, I just do not agree with this, this area where they're trying to build is the only common area of this development. We've been told that there's one orphaned to a single-family home division. No one seems to be able to find it, except for maybe a few single-family home families, of course. Just nobody agrees, this is worth all of our efforts, but, and we're the ones to upkeep with the maintenance of it. But Dan Ryan must have come in and just go ahead and blew those more and just get it done, and then all but out. I think that they shouldn't be approved to do this until they fix a lot of other landscaping issues because it seems like every time they do a new phase, they just go ahead and throw more soil than they go ahead and they uproot somewhere in the neighborhood and don't clean it up. And then every single phase, just whoever was the last one, they get all the leftover soil thrown behind their houses. Where are our kids going to play? And we heard the argument that the HOA doesn't have any money, and in order for the HOA to have money, we need to build more houses. Where are our kids going to play? What's the point in having all this HOA money if we can't use it to do anything for our children? No playgrounds, no nothing, no common area. What's the point? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Good evening, my name is Tommy Springs. I live in Montevideo, at Rogers. I've lived there for over a year now. When we met fiance first, our house was in person. We were told that the building behind us, or just saying the rubble behind us was supposed to be a common area. And now there's about 30 or so new townhomes behind us, and that was supposed to be a common area. As the gentleman previously just stated, I personally didn't approve it either. I believe that we need areas for children to play with, playing around with, or there's something else of townhomes. As well as the HOA, the commission, they were supposed to be in charge of landscaping. I've noticed that some of the first phase townhomes were getting new soil, getting their gardens treated by landscapers. But then the newer townhomes, so the, are getting new treatment of.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Joe Gainer. I live at 58 in Archer's Rock. I guess my purpose right now is just. Question. When we purchased our home, townhome there, we totally looked out the back window and it was a little area that needed to grow up a little bit. Obviously, I've been through some construction, our homes were built. What we were told was there would be no more construction behind our home. But great, you know, the kids can play out there behind us. Instead, what we ended up with, Dan Ryan blessed us with a beauty bird, is what I believe it was called, which did not grow up naturally. It was constructed behind their home. So I guess my, my concern would be if we don't maybe take a step back from this expansion, which I understand there's financial reasons, there's homes that people need to live in, I get all that. But maybe if we don't take a step back, we're going to end up with more surprise. Beauty birds surround our neighborhood that maybe we weren't really informed we were going to get. Maybe we need to be a little more clear on the language used. When we're told we're not going to construct something, what that means to us, what that means to Dan Ryan. I can appreciate the need for people to have homes to live in. We love our home, love the neighborhood, we love the families around, we love Archer's Rock. There's just some questions I think need to be answered. So I guess my request would be maybe we could take a step back for a little bit before we advance further with a bunch more properties and homes there and kind of, kind of understand the impact of all of us in a more clear fashion before we say, hey, let's, let's go.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Susan Legoski, I'm Lot 61. I'm the same area as them. There's a 15-foot mound behind our, behind my townhouse. It stretches 13 townhouses wide, and it is full of crap. Bricks, whatever debris they've dug up from the other sections is now caught behind my house. When I moved in last September, I did watch it in August, I was told, same as them, it'll be leveled out, not a problem, because there was nothing there. It was a minor, you know, maybe two-foot hill. Now it's 15 feet, old bricks, rocks, concrete, whatever the dump is back there. They, they, their, their erosion process was to spray what looks like shredded newspaper on, on this giant hill. So it's growing nothing, and it looks like crap. So you look out your, peek your window, back window, whatever, and there it is. So I think before they start a new section, a new phase, they should clean up the first phase or the second phase, whichever, whatever phase I'm experimenting in my backyard. Fix the methods before you start anything.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? Take a motion to, oop.
Yes, my name is Bentley Strailing. Me and my wife Molly, we were there, moved to Archer's Rock five years ago. We're actually the first house as soon as you enter the development, right on the left. It's a beautiful community, you know, we definitely love living there. We plan to live there and get along. The problem is, there's no parking. There's no parking. We can't have family events. I mean, construction never stops, I understand that, you know, done that part of my life. You work Saturdays, you work Sundays, whatever, you get the houses up and sold. But when you're trying to have a small cookout, a couple people come over, we can't park on the street because the street's not wide enough. We can't park in parking lots because there's no room at all. We have no place for even, even if we, we have three cars. So if something happens and I can't get in the garage for whatever reason, I don't, I have no place to park the truck. You know, it's just, the people that have lived there for such a long time have complained about the same thing, and it's never fixed. But yet we're putting up all these townhouses, and it's nothing, it's not going to do anything but cause more problems. And people have loved the new townhouses personally, I feel sorry for them because they have one parking spot. They don't even have a garage, most of them. So I don't know where they're going to put their car. And snow removal this year was a joke just because of the simple fact is we have people parking on the street and everything else. As when it comes to HOA, which I know this is not really typically your all's problem, but the sense of the construction has started, they slouched before, but since the construction has started, it's been even worse. So, and they keep, all they do is, like he said, they keep saying they're broke. I don't understand what they're spending the money on to be broke. So as, and this has been brought up to the HOA plenty of times, and I just don't know who to go to to have them take care of that situation. I don't know how they're, like he said, they're going to build more houses, they get more money. I know what I'm paying, and trust me, from what I'm paying for, it's a joke. It really is ridiculous for half-assed lawn care and sweetened language and trash removal. It is a joke. So like I said, I know that's not typically your issue, but if somebody, because if you guys just let the HOA slouch, I mean, what is the point of having? It really is, it's just, you're just grabbing money for whatever reason. But also, the last thing is, just in and out of community with all the construction vehicles, like I said, you know, they, you know, they are careful of our cars and stuff like that coming and out, but there's one road. And at little, and right where the townhouses are, there's one road. I mean, and it looks like they're starting to build an access road out on the other part of the development, which is great. But honestly, if you ask me, they shouldn't have done it very first thing. That way they could have got their vehicles in the rear development and kind of got the access right there. But they're not, they're doing everything for that little road. And if you guys have ever been down to the Archer's Rock development, you have this left turn that you cannot get the dolly and a trailer in barely. And you're squeezing the construction vehicles in and everything like that. And when you're leaving for work in the morning or you're coming home, it's chaos. It really is. It just makes, it's making everything a lot more difficult than it doesn't have to be. And also, I don't know if anybody can ask this question, but we, like I said, we've been living there for five years, and we have a road, a gravel road right next to our house. They have a fence and says no parking. Everybody parks there because they're sure they're parked, which is not a problem to us. We've never had an issue with that. But for the past five or six years since we lived there, we've heard that there's going to be a community center built and maybe something else. And then all of a sudden, here we're just using more townhouses. But what's going to happen with that road? Is it going to stay gravelled? Is it going to be filled? You know, I, I just think, to me, and then we have our neighbor, Mr. Singhass, who lives on the road, right on the opposite side of the road, we're just curious as to what's actually going to happen. We've been asking, we haven't got any answers. And, you know, like I said, we've been living there, we've been living here a year. We've been living there for five years. We're just curious, we don't know, nobody's answering us. We missed the last meeting, so maybe that was Phase 1, but just nothing happened yet. But like I said, we're just trying to figure out what's going on. There's no set plan, we can't look anywhere, they don't have a Facebook page, there's no newsletter, nothing. So if they can actually give us a drawing or see what's going on there. You can come up here and vote and describe what streets and this and that and everything else you want to, but unless people actually have a visual in front of their face, I mean, it's, it's a joke, really is. So that's all we kind of ask, just to simplify a little bit.
Thank you. Any other comments? Take a motion. Second?
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Goode now, or second by Mr. Goff to close the public hearing. All those in favor, aye? Matt, you want to try to address some of these concerns?
Sure. Someone take exception to some of you. Through the last, it's been a long process with the county. Obviously, this was a 600 lot community at one time, and we worked closely with the planning staff and engineering staff to put together a development agreement to close the community off. I think we got to somewhere around 15, 300 in the neighborhood, almost 600 lot community. The area that they're talking about that kids play in was to be a four-lane boulevard that ran through the community all the way to the back, and is going to have heavy traffic going through and 600 homes. We've taken that plan, turned it into, we finalized the community, turned it into 36 townhome lots with a single-loaded roadway. We've done it with the new designs per the latest and greatest ordinances. It does have a purpose, a purpose pavement, have a little parking on the side, additional parking, double-wide driveways, garage units, so it's got adequate parking. Symptoms of the past, which was a project, a project we were finishing out, was under the old rules. Parking, the parking on the old project, the parking requirements for much less than that. And so as we're finishing that, what we've done to mitigate that is we've done double-wide driveways on every single townhome, whether it's a garage townhome or a, or not garage yet. So we've done as much parking as we possibly can. As far as the landscape firm, I've, I've worked with the HOA several times, there've been questions on that. So when we, when we, there's only been one phase that we did to finish everything all at one time. And we moved the top all the streets out, at our cost with reimbursement through the escrow money. The landscape firm behind the one, the two rows of townhome units, they're back up to the, to the old property that got closed on. We, we anticipated getting through these entitlements a little bit faster, and it took a little bit of time to get some of our permits through. So we, we stopped out a lot of material there, temporarily stabilized it. A lot of it has been used in this section to finish out. There will be a burn there, and it will be dressed down, and be stabilized properly, and it will grow properly. But at the time, if there's a sense of doing that, because we anticipated that we're going to need the material, or at least a portion of the material when we do the next phase. You know, mostly complaints, I think we're out of that, there's two sticks of townhomes right through there. As far as common area goes, I've worked with the HOA a lot on this. You know, one of the, one of the inconsistencies with the HOA is we've been turnover in the community managers three times now since we've been involved. So there's been two new community managers in the last six months, which has kind of been, you know, difficult. We have met with the HOA at least four times over the last three years. We presented the plan from the onset, the HOA signed off on the agreement. No, it wasn't the plan, the plan was in the agreement. And we've given the plan to the, to the community manager several times, emailed to all the residents. So it's not, this is not super, by, by any means.
I mean, I'll be here and sort of, I've not been, I've not been. None of us. I mean.
I mean, the, the HOA, that's what flagging. And when you email flagging, if they don't get a response, I mean, they do have it. And they have the plan, the plan's not changed since, for two years. And I could share it with you sometime, but. But as far as one of the things, when we first got in there, there's huge three-acre open space. It is on the single-family side, but there is a huge three-acre open space that's not being utilized. It has an access easement to it and everything. And I talked, I talked with the community manager about this several times. You've got some buildings, one in there, you can utilize it, it's extremely loaded. There is, there is some open space, as we build this out, there'll be some open space. It's certainly not going to be the entire boulevard section was there, but there is some open space to utilize to build a, a top lot or things like that in the future. As far as, as far as some of the issues go with the HOA being, having financial issues, that's more or less, we're playing catch-up from the past, there's a lot of past dues that are being caught up on. People haven't paid their, their HOA assessments on an annual basis. So we worked with the HOA to go ahead and meet the properties, try to get those dues, and they collected quite a bit of them over the time. As far as construction vehicles, we try to be diligent about that as, as the houses are being built. Obviously, you know, when you're working from the front end, the community was built out, and you're working through that front end to go to the back end, there's some difficulties there, especially on the townhome side. But I think all in all, if you go out there, the community's turning into a great project. And from where it was, where it sat, to where it is now, I think, I think it's something to be proud of. And, you know, I appreciate the partnership between the county on this, and it's been, I think it's turned out great. And I think this last section will close the community out, it'll be something to be proud of.
Thank you, Matt. Karen, West Virginia, have any?
Matt, you don't work directly with the property managing company?
We do, they were already, the HOA was established before we got there. Target Management does that, but I do work with them directly. You know, there were some portions of the community that were turned over to the HOA already, that we didn't, we didn't have anything to do with, and, you know, and that's one of them, that open space, but we do communicate with them.
Could you translate to them that there's some issues that need to be addressed and try to get some of that accomplished possible? Thank you.
Any other questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
Just got to hear it.
The planning, the public hearing's been closed.
It's just a question.
Public hearing's been closed. That's the purpose of having that out.
If anybody, if somebody could tell us who are the president of our agency.
Any other questions? Any other questions from the committee? Not, take a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept staff recommendation, therefore, uh, approval of the major plan change.
The motion needs a second. Motion by Mr. Gokhan Hour, second by Ms. McCann and Norton. All those in favor, aye? Motion carries. Come on over, let, let, Jerry, let him come back in. Next public hearing is on Ashton parcel 31.
All right, so this is a public hearing for a request for waiver. Uh, the project is Ashton parcel, Ashton parcel 31, file 2106 dash 230. The developer is Ashton Prime's property and the surveyor is Robert Land Surveying. It's located in the Arden district, map 5H parcel 31. And it's located on the south side of Hack Open Way, approximately 1,000 feet west of Van Meter Avenue. The developer is proposing the creation of two 0.25-acre parcels to be served by water and sewer. The developer is requesting a waiver to section 305.4.1 of the Berkeley County subdivision ordinance requiring a two-acre minimum lot size for a preliminary final application. Engineering staff recommends denial of the waiver as the proposed parcel size is not in conformance with section 305.4.1 of the Berkeley County subdivision ordinance. And planning staff concurs with engineering staff.
Anyone to represent the project?
Yes, Mike Roberts, for the project.
Thank you, Mike. This is a public hearing. Anyone who has comments that'd like to make about Ashton parcel 31, please step forward.
Hi, uh, my name's Kyle French. Uh, I live at 579 Ackles Way. And mine's more of a question, if this was divided, if this goes through, what would be put there? Townhomes or, uh, houses back in that area? And it's not a huge lot, but there's enough room there for a trailer or something. Let's get out, so these.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? Not, I'll take a motion to co, close the public hearing.
So move. Second?
Have a motion by Mr. Gokhan Hour, second by Mr. Goff to close the public hearing. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Likewise, no. Public hearing's now closed. Plenary commission, if you have any questions for Mike on the project? Mike, you wanna try to answer the questions?
I, I can't address that. Um, the intent of the dog is to be two single-family residences on, on each of the lots. So no townhomes, no duplexes, no apartments, any single-family residences.
Plenary commission members, you guys have any questions for Mike on the project?
I have a question for you, Mike. I, I guess mine is directed at the staff. We sit here and approve, you know, 100 block subdivisions, you know. Now, what's, what's the problem with the two lot split here? So I understand the reason for this, but.
The process, that it's not going through sketch, public hearing, evidence, the, the normal process that a major subdivision will have. And it's not made for apartments.
Any other questions? Then I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we accept staff recommendation, deny the waiver as proposed, as the proposed parcel size is not in conformance with section 305, that's 4.1, of the Berkeley subdivision ordinance 2009.
Motion needs a second.
I'll second it.
Second, Nick Deal. Got a motion from Eddie Gokhan Hour, second from Nick Deal to accept staff recommendations for deny, deny of the waiver as proposed for lot sizes not in being in conformance with section 305 dot 4 dot 1 of Berkeley County subdivision ordinance 2009. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
So we have one no vote. Motion carries. Thank you. The next project is EAC Construction LLC.
This is a request for waiver for EA Construction LLC, lot one and residue. The file number is 2107 dash 238. The developer is Elmar Castillo and the surveyor is Greg Yabernetsky. It's located in Arden district, map 11, parcel 96, 300 feet east on Van Ceesville Road from the intersection of Route 115. The developer is proposing the creation of one 9,200 square foot lot and one 12,580 square foot residue. The developer is requesting a waiver to section 305 point 4.1 of the Berkeley County subdivision ordinance requiring a two-acre minimum lot size for preliminary final application. Engineering staff recommends denial of the waiver as the proposed parcel size is not in conformance with section 305 point 4.1 of Berkeley County subdivision ordinance. And planning staff concurs with this recommendation.
Anyone to represent the project?
Greg Yabernetsky here, representing the project.
Thank you, Greg. This is a public hearing. If you have any comments about the EAC Construction LLC, please step forward and address your comments.
I can answer my recommendation, the public hearing will be closed.
Second.
The motion by Mr. Gokhan Hour, second by Mr. Goff to close the public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Likewise, no. Motion carries. Plenary commission, if you have any questions for Greg on this project?
Before y'all, you may get too far along, I'm gonna explain a little bit about the situation. I know we're others talking about that we're not going through the complete planning commission process, which is sketch plan, preliminary plan, final, which requires major subdivision. The whole purpose for the preliminary final, I always assumed, was because there's no engineering involved, you could go directly to, direct to the final plan. Which is what we're really requesting by this waiver. There's, because there's no, there'll be no construction. There's nothing needs to be done on this parcel other than two single-family homes to be put on the parcel. The waiver request is because the application requires two acres or public, and public road, public road is two acres. If you have public water and sewer, you do not need two acres for a lot. And that's what, the waiver we're requesting is for a two-acre size. We're on a public road, there's lots to meet the minimum size, and there's no engineering involved. So I, I don't, I don't really understand the denial of the, of the waiver request either. I'm confused on that one. But that's the explicit situation on the lot. That's, that's what we have. We have water and sewer and the meeting requirements, and there's no engineering involved. I'm, I'm confused. And, and they've been, we've had these before and they have been, they've been approved. They've been.
Sure, I mean, honestly, it would help me too, so.
The, the current lot is a half-acre lot and it's a buildable lot. Uh, it fronts on Van Ceesville Road. If, if it were a larger area and they were able to have two-acre lots, there would be no issue. But it's because of the, the lot size that it doesn't qualify for the prelim final process. It requires more, um, scrutiny. It, it's more restricted. The, the two acres is that parameter that gives you the wiggle room to say that there's enough room that, on this lot to do all the things that are needed. Uh, and then soon as you start reducing that two-acre lot size, then it, it, it makes the viability of the lot more questionable. These large subdivisions that have the smaller lots, they've been evaluated for all of those things. They have contour lines, they have driveway entrances, they have, they have so much more evaluation that goes into each of those lots before they get approved. Stormwater management, roads, entrances, road drainage, um, the opportunity for a public hearing to have people know what the full plan is.
We've already had a public hearing, so the people can hear that. And there, right, right now on the property, there is an existing house and there's a 24 by 36 garage. Both of them are going to be taken down and two houses are gonna be put there. So what, because going to go on the property is gonna be no site, there's gonna be no increase in, maybe even less impervious area than was already there. We're tearing down one house, building another house, taking down a garage and putting in another house. So I under, I understand the process, if, if, if there's going to be a lot of things going on, but there is no, this, this is a site where we're, and we get two houses on a piece of parcel that has water and sewer other than going through a major subdivision, which there again, we, that's, if it, if it's possible through the major subdivision process, we're, we're incorporating a whole lot more cost, whole lot more fees for a man who wants to do two lots. He's not a developer, he's not out there trying to do a big subdivision. He doesn't have that kind of ground. And there's no effort in putting out much work into it. That's, that's pretty much where it is.
Any other questions for Greg? We'll entertain a motion from the plenary commissioner.
Mr. Mo, Mr. Chairman, I'd, I'd like to have a five minute recess.
Okay. All right.
Yep.
Take a five-minute recess.
Okay.
Well, why, why have the waiver process to start with? Why have a waiver process to start with?
Well, I'm not talking about, I mean, I'm just saying.
No, I'm not questioning you. I'm just saying that why have a waiver process to start with if you're just gonna deny it, you know?
It doesn't meet the requirements, but do you think it's okay?
Right. Yeah, we don't have to go with the recommendation.
And I'll be right there.
You can, you can, he's a couple of.
I mean.
I guess technically, Mike would have had, it's, it's potentially, I can't say without.
Okay. I'm gonna reconvene the meeting. Nick, are you back on?
Yep, I'm here.
All right. You have any other questions for Greg?
Mr. Chairman, you could also have a discussion.
I think, my, my point was, um, that, that this, this property is served by water and sewer. And I understand that it does not have the, um, all the permission information that may be required on a major subdivision, you know, but it's a two lot.
I'm, I'm prepared to make a motion that we accept the waiver.
Hey, you have a motion to accept the waiver? As per Senator? You have a second?
Second.
You have a second? We have a motion by Mr. Gokhan Hour, second by Ms. Norton, to grant the waiver for a proposed lot size in section 35, 305, 4 dot 1, Berkeley County subdivision 2009. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All that opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much for your consideration.
Next project is Farron Runcles.
This is a, uh, public hearing and a request for waiver for Farron Runcles project, file number 2107 dash 237. The developer is Farron Runcles and the surveyor is Greg Yabernetsky. It's located in the Hedgesville district, map 21, parcel 83, on Potato Hill Street, directly beside 215 Potato Hill Street. The developer liked the subdivision, 7.4 acres, to create a 3.4 acre parcel around the existing dwelling and create a four acre residue. Proposed utilities are unknown at this time. The developer is requesting a waiver to section 305 point 4.1 of Berkeley County subdivision ordinance requiring road frontage on a West Virginia Division of Highways road to proceed through the preliminary final process. Engineering staff recommends denial of the waiver as the proposed parcels are not in conformance with section 305 point 4.1 of the Berkeley County subdivision ordinance requiring just a Division of Highway road frontage. Planning staff concurs with engineering staff in this recommendation.
Anyone to represent the project?
Mary Murphy.
This is a public hearing. Um, if you have any comments on the Farron Runcles project, you're invited to step forward. Take your name and any concerns.
Public hearing will be closed. Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Goff, a second by Mr. Gokhan Hour to close the public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Public hearing is closed. Plenary commission members, we have any questions for the developer? I have one question, so let's back up. Is this a right-of-way? Is it part of this to get to the rest, the remainder of the property or is it?
Um, no, we are just in the process of going to do the humble. So we wanna try to sell part of this property initially to fund that property.
So.
But we need to keep part of it because part of it has a garage on it that we're not ready to let go again.
There's, I think the Potato Hill road goes up through there, but it, it, it's not a state road. It's just a, it just goes down Hedgesville, across the ridge, and then everyone, we're, we're taking it into the northern road. And it's basically just.
But is, is it a recorded right-of-way?
That's what the right, that's what the request is for, because it's not a state road. But there are other houses up there, I don't know who maintains the Potato Hill road, but you may.
The, the residents maintain it. The town or the county comes up there. Or the state.
So according to your notes, the remaining four acres is to be sold. So according to your notes, the remaining four acres is to be sold to a neighbor.
Yeah, a neighbor.
So it will join their property.
He just wants to keep it as a vacant lot, he doesn't want to do anything with it because it doesn't want us to sell all of it for neighbors to be able to build, somebody to build a property. Basically just to change here, which really is all it's going to.
If that is the intent, my question would be why isn't this a merger plat instead of a preliminary final subdivision when the piece could just be conveyed?
Greg, can you address that?
That's a possibility. If they have it right, it could be merged into this property. They could do it that way also.
Then no way that would be necessary, it would be a merger.
So it's something that you guys can actually take care of and do your engineering.
If you'd be willing to do that, that's fine.
Yeah, I mean, it's whatever, it's just some stuff we're told to start with, so.
Pick it up your hand. I do.
But yeah, I think I talked about the market, people need to market, like a property line they adjusted or something.
If she could, if the property or proprietor wants to withdraw her application, she could or you could deny it or just grant it or something. Don't try to tell you what decisions to make, but in terms of if they want to do a different process, one of the two probably would happen either. Will that, will that work for you? If you just?
I think, I think it would work if they're happy with just moving it on.
So you would just, you're going to withdraw, withdraw your request?
Exactly.
Is that correct? You're going to withdraw your request?
Um, yeah, that's fine, if what you're saying with what should be of the subdivision is in it.
Okay.
Very good. Thank you.
Anything we need to vote on? Okay, so the Farron Runcles has been withdrawn. The next project is the Villas at Warm Springs.
This is a request for waiver for the Villas at Warm Springs, filed 2107 dash 240, filed through 2104 dash 132. The developer is Johnny Myers and Sons LLC, the engineer is Fox and Associates, located in the Opecan district map 10C. Parcels 59.1, 60.3, 60.4, 0.5, 0.6, 7.8, 0.9, and 61, 61.1, 61.2, and 61.3. This project is located on the east side of Warm Springs Avenue, approximately 900 feet north of Plaza Court. The developer is proposing 14 duplex lots and one single family lot on approximately 2.8 acres to be served by public water and sewer. On May 17th, 2021, the planning commission granted a waiver to the minimum cul-de-sac radius, which is 70 feet, as required by Appendix A of subdivision regulations, and proposing reducing the cul-de-sac radius to 40 feet contingent upon the following, and this is what was already approved, vacating a portion of the right of way of the road to create community open space to install no parking signage and paint curb red in the area of cul-de-sac issued on the attached. Install sidewalk and appropriate crosswalks to create a continuous walking path for use of community residents and include the impervious surface associated with the existing developed lot in the MS 4 compensation sizing for the BNAPs. Those four items were already contingent items for the previously approved waiver. The developer is now requesting a waiver to section 712 of the Berkeley County subdivision ordinance, requiring community open space of no less than 10% of the total acreage contained in the development parcel. This site would require .3 acres or 13,068 square feet of open space. What's actually proposed is .22 acres or 9,607 square feet of open space. At the time of the first waiver request, no open space area was proposed. That's why we're coming back for this final remaining piece. Engineering staff recommends approval based on the conditions presented in the request for consideration and planning staff concurs with the recommendation.
Anyone to represent the project?
Good evening, Steve Sianovich with Fox and Associates representing the applicant.
Thank you, Steve. This is a public hearing. If you have any comments about the Villas at Warm Springs, you're invited to step forward, state your name and your concerns.
The public hearing be closed.
A motion by Mr. Goff, second by Mr. Gokenhour to close the public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Likewise, motion carries. Planning commission members, do you have any questions for Steve on the project?
No question. With motion, we accept staff recommendation and based on the conditions presented at the request for consideration.
Second.
First by Mr. Gokenhour, second by Mr. Smith to grant the waiver and to open space to be less than one, or three thirds of an acre at .22. All those in favor? Oppose? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. The final public hearing is Peacemaker National Training Center.
This is a request for sketch plan. Project is Peacemaker National Training Center, file number 2104 dash 153. The developer is Peacemaker Properties LLC, the engineer is Greenway Engineering. It's located in the Jarrettstown district map 33, parcel 15. Property is located on Brandon's Ward Road, approximately 800 feet north of the Virginia State Line. This project proposes development of a trade technical school at the Peacemaker National Training Facility on approximately 457 acres to be served by private well and septic. No waivers or exceptions have been requested. On July 12th, 2021, the county engineer Doug Smith issued a letter of approval stating that review of this project was completed and found to be in compliance. Since the sketch plan meets the requirements of the subdivision ordinance, staff recommends advancement of the sketch plan to preliminary planning stage.
Do you have anyone to represent the project?
Can I just look over from Greenway Engineering to represent Peacemaker Properties LLC?
This is a public hearing. If you have any comments about the Peacemaker National Training Center, invited to step forward, state your name and your concerns.
The public hearing be closed.
Motion by Mr. Goff, second by Mr. Gokenhour to close the public hearing. All those in favor? Those opposed? Public hearing is closed. Planning commission members, do we have any questions for Brooke on the Peacemaker Properties LLC?
motion, we accept staff recommendation and advance the sketch plan to preliminary plan stage.
Second.
For a motion by Mr. Gokenhour, second by Ms. Norton to accept the staff recommendations and advance the sketch plan to the preliminary plan stage. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you so much. While we're up here, I just want to introduce these two to Michael Hernandez and he is the developer.
All right, thanks.
Thank you for your time to speak.
Thanks for hanging, hanging well with us for like an hour and a half.
Learned a lot today, especially from water.
All right, thanks. That ends the public hearings. The next is the preliminary plan approval, Spring Mills Putt.
This is a request for preliminary plan approval for Spring Mills Apartment Space 3, file number 2102 dash 043. The developer is Rental Properties Incorporated, the engineer is Fox and Associates. It's located in the Falling Waters district map 16, parcel 45, and is situated along the west side of TJ Jackson Drive, approximately 170 feet north of its intersection with Light Hill Road. The project proposes the development of six eight unit apartment buildings on approximately 4.8 acres to be served by public water and sewer. No waivers or exceptions have been requested. On July 26th, 2021, the county engineer Doug Smith issued a letter of approval stating that review of this project was completed and found to be in compliance. The preliminary plan meets the requirements of the subdivision ordinance, therefore staff recommends advancement of the preliminary plan.
Thank you. Anybody want to represent the project?
Steve Sianovich with Fox and Smith, he is representing the applicant.
Thank you, Steve. Planning commission members, we have any questions for Steve or questions about the project?
I move advancement of the preliminary plan.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Norton, second by Mr. Smith to accept staff recommendations and advance through the preliminary plan. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item before the commission is the preliminary final approval of South Brook, section one.
I'm going to be excused myself from this project due to conflicts of interest.
Let Chris show his excusable project.
Ready for South Brook. This is a request for preliminary final plat approval. Project is South Brook, section one, file number 2106 dash 224. The developers Chandler's Glen LLC and the engineer is Gordon. It's located in the Mill Creek district map 3, parcel 9. The site is along Hatchery Road and Shiley Road, approximately half a mile east of Winchester Avenue. The project proposes the creation of 100 acre parcel with 185 acre residue parcel to be served by public water and sewer. County engineer Doug Smith issued approval on July 23rd, 2021, stating that a review of this project has been completed and found to be in compliance. Project is found to be complete in compliance with the regulation and therefore staff recommends approval of the preliminary final plat.
Anybody want to represent the project?
Ryan Perk, Steve Jordan, and Andrew Wilson, here are the developers.
Thank you. Thinking, is anybody have questions for Ryan or Honor?
Like motion, we accept staff recommendation and through the preliminary, I'll apply.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Gokenhour, second by Mr. Goff to accept staff recommendations for approval of the preliminary final plat. All those in favor? Oppose? Motion carries. Thank you. Next on the agenda is staff and council discussion, action and motion of the draft subdivision ordinance.
Just one matter to the staff before that. The, I should present the previous case where.
Runcles.
Ms. Runcles asked to withdraw her application. There's some question whether the merger is possible in her situation. What I would ask is just to avoid grabbing the pen and if she was or go through any additional process, if the planning commission would vote on whether to grant the planning department's staff the authority to just reinstate her application without any process or means for that waiver that she previously applied for. Just if, if it turns out that that's the appropriate way, then it has to get, you got to just test.
And that's for the merger?
For the, yeah, for the planning commission to consider grabbing that relative discretion to the staff. So.
At first, Mr. Goff, second by Mr. Gokenhour. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Thank you.
So the last item we had on the agenda was regarding the subdivision ordinance. We just wanted to make sure everybody received the, the copy of the document and the email that was sent out to you. I have one other item that I'll just hand out. It's the flow chart that they definitely also put together to help translate all of the content specific to article three and four and.
All right, thank you. I guess we're strongly encouraged to read the honor 28 pages and.
I would just tell the commission that there's not, in the code, there's, in the West Virginia code, there's no real goal for the planning commission in this process, but in our current subdivision ordinance, there is a goal that there's a recommendation to come from the planning commission to the county council as to whether or not to accept. If you want to have other process in there, if you want to have a public hearing or anything like that, I mean, public comment, whatever, that's entirely up to the planning commission in terms of their reaching their recommendation, but the, the required public hearing process is.
That's the county council, right?
So it would, the public will get a chance to speak, but it doesn't matter when it comes in to the, and if the planning commission wants to direct us to give feedback from relevant, you know, people like developers, engineers, surveyors, in certain way.
Maybe we ought to suggest that to the staff to put it out there for some of the relatives, for the developers, engineers, and they just kind of take a look at it, any comments they have. We can bring this back up at the next meeting for discussion or try to put it out a month, given time for people to respond back. How many?
It's pretty long.
Pretty long. It's 128 pages.
I can go ahead and do the IT request to get it on our planning webpage.
Okay.
And then we can just add it to the next agenda for discussion again.
Okay. Anything else from the staff or legal counsel? Want to leave? You've been here the whole evening.
Well, I, okay, so here's the deal. I live on 51, middle way to Pikeville, and I live across from Markle's shale pit, just before the county line in Druthers. Rumor is a bomb that says they sold it to a dollar store. And I talked to a young lady in your department the other day, Sarah, and I called her because I didn't know the address to the place, I didn't know anything, I was just kind of getting, you know, step on. Anyway, she called me back and said there was something, maybe on your dinner night I bought it. So, but she said it was at a different street address because there's actually no street. I mean, it's just a big empty shale pit. Now there's like scags or, there's like three roads in one, right, at 51 where they just took down this big sign. But that rumor was it was going to be a sheet spool over it. But I guess my question is, how many dollar stores do we need in a five mile area between the county line and the circle of Inwood? Because, I mean, I spent a ton of money on that property and I've spent probably another 30, 40 grand just making it decent. Used to be just a U-turn for school buses, I'm sure, back in the day. The house next door, two doors down from me, sold for 410. They just did appraisal on my house for 400,000, which I paid three quarters. So I guess my question to the planning department, whoever it is, is if you were to put a dollar store across the street from my, I'm directly across the street from my house, my property value would probably drop. So the last thing I ever wanted to do was be a protester. That's the last damn thing I got in my bucket list, but I guess I got to because, I mean, there's a dollar store, there's a dollar store in Inwood, there's another dollar, Family Dollar in Inwood, and the area, I guess, if the owners, which are Markles, could build roads, they do it every day, they can put in 500,000 dollar houses, not that, sorry, Dan Ryan houses, but we could have a nicer community at that end of the count. I, like I said, I've spent a ton of money to make that property decent. And I, I think I've been rewarded with it because the appraisal company said it is worth more than what I have.
We haven't had anything come in for that shale pit for Markles, but hold on, there's a sketch plan in that I've reviewed, that's waiting engineering review for a dollar, a proposed dollar general on 51 near, I don't think it's three run.
Because it's three run and then it's scags or skunkers, so I.
Maybe it is three run, but it's, it's a proposed sketch, so it's just at the beginning stages, but nothing, nothing's come in for anything for Markles property.
Well, I mean, I just, I got on your website tonight because I forgot where the hell I was going tonight. So when I went there, your website said that you guys are located at, where the hell is it? Queen Street. So I got over to Queen, Queen Avenue, Queen, and they said, no, I had to go over here.
City of Mardi Gras, is that where you went?
Yeah, we're there.
This is Berkeley County.
Again, when you called a five minute recess, I went out there, swam, quickly back in. Again, when you called a five minute recess, I went out there, swam, put me back in. You locked the doors.
The sensor was locked after like an hour.
Luckily, somebody was coming out and they let me back in because so.
That's for safety.
I didn't know if my hospital bag would actually work on, on your sensor there, but I didn't try it. But, so I mean, how do I find out if, I mean, down the road, I mean, I asked.
You'll see a public hearing sign. Anything that's done on that property that checks through a site plan, which anything that would be done, would be done through a site plan, you'll see it being public at some time.
And then what? We come in and do like what these guys did tonight?
Yeah.
You guys go on another dollar store, you know, and probably thirty hookups, water, sewer, because I've got sewer, or yeah, city sewer, but for some reason I got a well. But I would assume the city would like more city sewer and water hookups than a dollar store. And it's nice and dark out there at night, and I, street lights, and I'm just whining out, like, just throwing it out there. I don't think Berkeley County needs a, a more, a dollar store.
Dollar General will put stores within two mile radius.
Still make money.
Dollar General.
There's no houses out there.
That is their demo, though, just to let you know. They will put within a two mile radius.
I don't want to protest, but I want to have to. And do I need a sign, a permit to put a sign out there that says, let's stop the dollar store invasion?
Just stay out of the right of way. Stay out of the right, right of way.
No, it was, that's my problem. Well, thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Have a good night.
All right, thank you.
And I move to return.
Got a motion, second? Motion by, Mr. Golf, a second by Chris Smith, to adjourn the meeting at, I don't know what time it is, seven fifty-one?
Yeah, we've been here this long, this late in the morning.
Yeah, Lenny cannot take vacation anymore.